I mean to order. This is the Emeryville City Council Special Meeting and it's a staff report regarding the status report on the Emeryville Child Development Center. And Karen, can we have roll call?
Councilmember Atkins?
Here.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Vice Mayor Asher?
Here.
And Mayor Brinkman?
I am here. Okay, we have public comment, but if you have anything that's not on this agenda, you might want to hold it. Or you might, I'm sorry, if you have something that's not on this agenda, please come up. If it's regarding the study session, you might want to hold it after Cindy gives her report. Okay? And that's three minutes each. So Cindy.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Brinkman and members of the council. I'm Cindy Montero, the Community Services Director, and tonight we've prepared a status report on the Emeryville Child Development Center. So after the question and answer segment of our report, we will be requesting council to commit, comment on this presentation and give direction to staff to return with alternatives for the long-term operations of the Child Development Center. So as you know, the program started in 1979 and we operated out of a portable at Anna Yates and then we moved to Ralph Holly. And then in 1991, the program moved to its current facility on 53rd Street and that facility was constructed with redevelopment funds. The program objectives include providing full-time childcare for families in the Bay Area and providing children that attend the program with the necessary skills for successful entry into educational system. So we're going to do a brief history of the Child Development Center in the city council. In May of 2008, we were asked to bring a study session, present a study session, and we asked for direction concerning policy issues. Staff was directed to come back with alternative methods of providing childcare services. We came back in June of 2009 with four possible models of operation: retain the current model, contract with a third-party provider, or reduce the program size and adopt a sliding scale, or discontinue providing full-time care and go to a recreational preschool program. Staff was directed to continue with the current model and also to issue an RFQ to third-party childcare providers. The RFQ was sent to 20 providers and we had one response, and that was from the Berkeley-Albany YMCA program. And in April of 2010, the Finance Committee requested a review of the financial stability of the program and recommended that a task force be formed. So in April of 2010, staff was directed by the city council to form a task force. That task force met three to four nights a week for about two to three weeks in order to bring a recommendation to the city council's May budget hearing. So at that budget hearing in May of 2010, the city manager recommended that the center be outsourced in order to balance the city's operating budget for the next two fiscal years. But at that same meeting, a new model of operation was presented, and that model included raising the enrollment to 110 children and to also reduce costs related to staffing. After the transition into this new operational model and a few difficult years, staff felt that an outside consultant should be hired to conduct a thorough analysis of the program, and Bantech was hired. In May of 2012, staff presented a program plan to address the issues identified in that report and to request additional funding from the city's general fund. So now I'd like to introduce Diana Garcia Ortiz, the Child Development Manager, and she's just going to talk about the benefits of early childhood education, our enrollment, and a bit about transitional kindergarten. Diana?
Good evening, council. During their early years, children go through critical stages of development and consistent high-quality early childhood education can have a long-lasting beneficial effects on the overall development of children. The state of California Department of Education, as well as many other researchers, have proven that there are many benefits of having early childhood education, such as better learning benefits. Early childhood education gives most children a jump start in education for their kindergarten, elementary years, and beyond. Social benefits. Children who attend early childhood education programs have the benefit of relating to other students and adults, which can increase their social skills. Economic benefits. Thanks to early childhood education, children are able to grow up with a head start on education, giving them a better chance in life. Current issues at the center is experiencing issues related to staff development, licensing, along with reduced enrollment, which of course impacts the center's revenue. First, let's take a look at the program enrollment and demographics. In our infant class, right now, we have 7.8 full-time enrolled families. The maximum is 12. In our toddler, two toddler classrooms, we have 22.8 full-time enrolled families. The maximum would be 32. In our pre-kindergarten classrooms, we have 40.4 full-time enrolled families. The maximum would be 66. So right now, we have a total of 71 full-time enrolled families for the maximum enrollment of 110 full-time. For our subsidized families, we have 20 right now. Nine of those families are residents of Emeryville. Five families work in Emeryville, and six families live in the 94608 area code. This past August, we had 38 children graduate from our preschool program. Of those 38 that graduated, 17 are in Anna Yates kindergarten class right now. Four attend the transitional kindergarten program. This is a great transition from our program to the next level of education. After two months of trying to fill the preschool slots, we conducted a phone survey of five local childcare centers and heard from them that they are also experiencing decreased enrollment, and a few mentioned that maybe transitional kindergarten may be a factor. So what is transitional kindergarten? Transitional kindergarten, which is called TK for short, is the new grade level that California created for children who just missed the age, the cutoff to, for kindergarten. TK is the first year of two-year kindergarten program that uses a modified kindergarten curriculum that is age and developmentally appropriate. A child is eligible for transitional kindergarten if a child will have his or her fifth birthday between October 2nd and December 2nd. And for the program year 2014-15, it's September 1st, September 2nd through December 2nd. Also, children with earlier birthdays may also attend transitional kindergarten if they turn five after December 2nd, and that's only if all the five-year-olds go in first. The center provides ongoing tours for prospective families twice a week. We are seeing the highest need for enrollment in the infant and toddler room and the lowest need in enrollment for the preschool rooms. We have been contacting the families that toured but did not enroll their children to identify why they did not choose ECDC. And some of the responses have been that their part times and our part times don't match, that our tuition is too high, also that a lot of the parents are either pregnant and so their children are not born yet, or they are not four months of age as of yet. Now Deborah Acker, Administrative Services Director, will give an overview of current funding sources along with revenues and expenditures.
Thank you, Diana. Good evening. So tonight, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the funding for the center. Here is a pie chart of the revenue budget for the fund that is set aside for the childcare center. You can see that it's mostly made up of fees that are collected by the families that pay market rate. There's a small slice that includes the fees of subsidized families. That's about $1.4 million. There are grants that we received from the state of California that makes up about $155,000. And then the city has committed to contributing $250,000 for this year, and that makes a total of $1.8 million in revenue towards this program for this current fiscal year. The state grant information that we have here and is included in your staff report is really here to show you that the grant program was a very major revenue source at the beginning, or back in 2010. And the way the grant program works, I understand, is if you're not able to draw down all the money that's authorized, they will alter your grant award in future years. So you can see here that each quarter, we file a reimbursement based on our expenditures, and they've been less than what the total authorized award is, just because we don't have as many subsidized families in there. So the grant award has gone down over time.
Can I ask one quick question about that? What was the year where the council decided that the center would only serve Emeryville residents and 94608? Before that, right, then you could draw from kind of a broader pool with your grant, and I'm wondering if it corresponds with 2009, 2010?
I think, let's see, was it in 2008? Is that what the staff report says here?
I can't remember.
Yeah, let me get back to it and make sure. But in the staff report, it does speak to that.
Okay.
And so maybe Cindy can look that up and confirm for you what that is. Also, we've been able to receive some donations from different corporate organizations. I think originally Chiron was committed to contributing about $20,000 a year. When Novars took over, they decided to just pay that obligation off. And so you can see here in 2009, there was $176,000. 2010, $104,000. And then Pixar contributed $20,000 in 2012. The general fund, in some of the reports we've seen, there's recommendations for the general fund to contribute, you know, $450,000 to $300,000. And the other column is the amounts we've actually transferred from the general fund to fund it. So this year, you can see it's $250,000 so far in the budget. And in your staff report, it gives a five-year picture of expenditures and revenues. And here, this is just one year. This is just the budgeted expenditures and revenue. So you have salaries and benefits of 1.5, with some additional services of about $350,000. Total expenditures of 1.8. And then the revenue coming in is 1.5 with the general fund contribution. For the budgeted picture, we're seeing that we're going to use $54,000 of reserves, and that would leave us with still an ending fund balance of $123,000. The problem that we're seeing right now is based on the low enrollment that Diana just went over with you. The revenue number is not going to meet its 1.5 target. You know, we have from 30 to 40 kids openings for children right now, and so that revenue target is not going to be reached. And so if we were to continue the way we are now, we would have a deficit of $143,000 by the end of the fiscal year, by the end of June 30th. So just to see the picture of what the general fund is contributing to this, you know, our general fund is about $29 million, and the ECDC contribution here is shown as 1% of that, which is the $250,000 that I've shown to you on that chart. So that's my financial overview, if you had any questions. I also wanted to just quickly put on my HR hat and say there were some recommendations in the report that went to council in 2012, and we've been working very closely with the management staff, which is all new from when I started here, and with the staff, the teachers of ECDC. And we've tried to, you know, address some of the insufficient teacher spaces. We've hired new teachers. We've been working with them on absenteeism and setting new policies. Diana and her staff have been meeting regularly and developing handbooks for parents, for the teachers. They've been putting together policies and procedures and really working on their professional development, setting up standard curriculum. And there's also been improvements to the facilities and to technology at the facility. So I just wanted to point out those things have been really the focus over the last year.
Okay.
And Cindy's going to finish up.
Jack, I think to answer your question, it was 9:10.
Okay.
Right around when we switched over to that new operational model.
Okay.
So again, we just want to, our original program objectives is provide quality full-time childcare for families in the Bay Area and provide children with the skills necessary for entry into the educational system. So next steps. So next steps and some items for discussion, which were in your staff report. Does the city want or can it afford to continue supporting ECDC and at what level? If the direction is to continue to operate the center, staff will need to conduct a detailed evaluation of the center and formulate a strategy for implementation. If the direction is to discontinue supporting the center in its current model, next steps need to be determined. So after direction from the council, we will return in the spring of 2014 with a program plan and implementation schedule for the preferred alternative. So now, are there any questions and comments?
Councilmembers?
Mayor, I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay, well, you will have three minutes of, so please, if you don't mind queuing up and just approaching the council, the council, the microphone, and saying your name and making your comment. No one? Must be somebody out there.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Pleasure to see you here tonight. My name's Mark Kelly. I both live and own a business here in Emeryville, and because I'm a parent and ardent supporter of early child education, I've served on ECDC Advisory Committee for almost three years. And what I've done is I've put my thoughts on paper and submitted them to Karen to give to you folks. A little bit lengthy. Having done that, I want to recognize the efforts of those who I've met in my capacity as a committee member. You know, these are the people who are serving the best interests of our children, including the staff, management, parents, councilmembers, and fellow advisory committee members. I would leave you with this thought that I really am a strong supporter of quality, high quality, and that's the emphasis you'll see in all the information, early childhood education. And I will continue to support Emeryville as it moves forward to make what I suspect will be some hard decisions relative to achieving our collective interest in providing all of our children with the very best start in life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this information, too. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Brian Carver. I'm a resident of Emeryville and was the chair of the task force mentioned in the staff report from 2010 and chair of the ECDC Advisory Committee for its first two years of operation. I've spent a lot of time thinking about the best way to run the center. I also had children at the center for a period of eight years, from 2005 until this last July, when they outgrew it. So first, quickly, I guess, just procedurally, I wouldn't recommend any drastic action at a study session that most of the parents didn't know about and/or they'd be here. We learned that two years ago. Or a staff report that doesn't even include a recommendation from your advisory committee, you know, charged with this subject matter, right? So I would think if anything, this is a moment for you to direct further study, unless you already know what you want to do. But what I would say is, nothing has a better chance of creating the sense of community that we so want in Emeryville than this center. The report indicates that 21 children overall, you know, moved on from ECDC to our elementary school, Anna Yates. That's an entire kindergarten class. There were two more I know that wanted to get in and were turned away. So it's this amazing glue between our school district and our city and brings together neighbors like nothing else in this town. So I think you should decide at a policy level, this is important. We want to support this. Some of the alternatives that you've heard, you know, considered in the past, like outsourcing, those aren't going to solve the problems that were just presented to you. You know, if you have a concern about the quality of the care, we can also show you licensing violations from all the other providers, right? That doesn't solve that question. Other things solve that. We've gone through a lot of management changes, and you now have a new group in place who I think you should trust. You've got a new city manager, a new community services director, and a relatively new center director. The reason you put good people in these positions is because they know what they're doing. And so if anything, I would recommend you tell those folks, look at this problem and come back to us with a solution. But at the policy level, we as council say to you, this is important. The city should do this well. And you come back to us and tell us how to do it well, and we'll do that. That would make the most sense to me at this stage. Alternatively, forming another task force with maybe some council members and other interested people, as you've done in the past, would be another way forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Brian. Okay, Maru?
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Mira Desai. I'm speaking here as the chapter president. And I'd just like, Brian set up a nice ground for me to segue into. The key thing that I want to point out that is not made very clear in the staff report is that the staff report mentions the Bantech findings and the things that were steps that were taken in order to address some of the issues. What is not mentioned is that the current system of two managers, they've been here less than a year. A lot of new teachers have also been less than a year. So some of the steps that were taken because of the Bantech findings have not had the time to play itself out. The staff report also talks about a number of operational as well as financial constraints that the center is facing. In terms of operational, I would like to direct your attention to the fact that management has been working with us, with the union, very closely. We meet almost every other month. We discuss. The committee consists of two teachers and of course the managers and myself, where various issues, the operational issues, are being sought to be addressed. And again, this is less than a year, and I see improvements being made, just because we do not have indicators in terms of, you know, that the center is not making money. Things like enrollment, the shift that happened that the council decided that the enrollment should be expanded to more than our zip code, that happened just a few months ago. We don't even know what kind of impact that has had in enrollment. So the number of things I think that are in place at this point, and in my opinion, the council would be wise to give the current model, which a lot of money has been spent on in terms of Bantech report, and not to mention the CDC Advisory Committee. They have been working very hard. And I just feel that more time is needed. And at the end of the day, the city does pride itself as being unique, and the fact that we, the city, operates a childcare center is very unique. And on top of that, I've heard from councilmembers and commissioners how important family-friendly housing is. You know, that's the kind of work I do. So that goes hand in hand with having a childcare center in the city that is operated by the city. And in terms of, you know, I mean, I think Deborah presented a statistic that only 1% of the general fund is devoted to CDC for the youth programs. That is miniscule, in my opinion. And so my recommendation would be is that you give the existing operational model that the council recommended two years ago, which has just taken off, and I think there's still a lot more time for this model to give it a chance. And let's see if we can work out the operational difficulties that the center is having. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just one more thing. I had some teachers lined up to talk as well, but they feel intimidated, so they won't be talking tonight.
Oh. Well, please, please come up. This is your meeting.
Yeah, this is your time.
It's your opportunity.
We'd like to hear from you.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Saypon, and I am a teacher too at ECDC. I have to say that I do agree with Mr. Kelly that high-quality education, early childhood education, is important. If you come to ECDC, you are going to find it. We are working on it every single day. We are down with the children. We are forming those bonds, those relationships, not only with the children, not only with their parents, but with the staff, with the city council or city manager, with our union. What we have done in the year that I have been there has been so amazing. We have a curriculum. We are implementing it every single day. I invite you, come to our center, read a story to the children, play with the children, come and talk to us, come and see what we do every single day. See the lives that we are enriching. We take our jobs seriously. We have faith in Diana. We have faith in Antoinette. Faith is a lot to go on, but it's something that's really important, and we are passionate. We are here. We are united. We are strong. Give us a chance. We can't do it in a day. We need your support. We need your faith. We love our center. We love our families, and we love our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other teachers? Going once? Going twice? You sure? Okay. Hope the carrying is closed. What's the will of the council?
Mayor, would the city manager have any comments at this time?
Sure. I guess what I want to say is, from the first day that I started here, I think I met with Cindy, and we talked about what was going on in the center, some of the amazing things that are going on in the center, and some of the concerns and challenges that the center was having. And we discussed how, for me, you know, I will say, I am a mother of two very young children, one who is four and one who's seven. And so for me personally and professionally, we've discussed that it's really non-negotiable that if the city is going to continue to have the center, put its name on the center, have it be something that we are proud of to put our name on, that it's non-negotiable that we have to provide the resources and the support necessary in order to bring it to the level that I think it's required to be, to be a city-owned and operated center. So whatever the council decides on a policy level, I do want to say that we are committed to move forward and implement that, and we'll come back and provide to you an honest analysis on what it would take to move forward in whatever direction you all decide to do.
Okay. Thank you for that. Jack?
Yeah, I have things to say. My children went to ECDC for about eight years, and it's difficult for me to see the center struggling, but I also feel that right now, that the center has been kind of a victim of forces that are really outside of its control. And part of that is that daycare is actually becoming a kind of luxury good, that to send your child to daycare from age, you know, one to four is going to cost you about as much as it is to send them to university. That in most major metropolitan areas, if you have two children in daycare, then that is more than you pay in rent. And with the rents constantly rising in the city of Emeryville, with this being a very expensive place to live, and if you have two parents in the home, usually both of them must work in order to afford to live here, to me, it's important to preserve daycare. I think one of the things that we're seeing in terms of enrollment and having those empty spaces is that people cannot afford it anymore. It's difficult to pay $1,600 a month. It's difficult, if you have two children, to then pay $3,000. It's difficult if you have two children to then pay $3,000 a month. And so one of the things that I had suggested was that we look at a sliding scale model because we're doing some good things in that we're using the one tool the state gives us with the subsidy, right? And we've got market rate people in the same building and we have all these families together. They get to know each other. They move over to the kindergarten together. They go to the rec program after school together. All of that is good. But I think that there's a big chunk in the middle of people that we're missing, right? That can no longer afford the service. And right now, what we're doing is we're paying to have no one in those slots, right? If we had a sliding scale, it might be possible that people could pay something to fill up those slots. And so that was one of the things that I offered as something to consider going forward because I feel like we have reached really a point where daycare has gotten so expensive. And you know, Emeryville understood what was right in 1979, but the state still hasn't really gotten it together in terms of subsidizing daycare. They've now created transitional kindergarten that's helping some people whose children are four. And even on the federal level, right? There's not enough funding going toward early childhood education. For me, the 1% that this absorbs out of our general fund is really nothing. And the Bantech report tells us very plainly that we need to devote more resources to the center for it to operate. That, you know, the idea that it could ever be revenue neutral was one that would never work and that if we want to see improvements, that we really need to commit to the center long-term and we need to have a plan for the center long-term. I feel like we have this discussion every couple of years and what it ends up doing is it wears down morale, it drives down enrollment. And if we're looking to forge community, it's impossible to do those things when people feel like they're constantly under threat of being shut down and feeling like they're not valued. So what I would like to see is funds devoted to the center. I would like this to not be a question, a budget question, every two years. I think that if we're really talking about full-service, being a full-service community, that we need to have full-day childcare and a child development center. So.
Yeah, I have a few comments too, and I appreciate the comments of council member, or vice mayor Asher. And I actually really appreciate the fact that you know the center from different roles because I have not been a parent at the center. I've served on the ECDC Advisory Committee. I also served on the task force that Brian Carver chaired. And I also have been an educator, a teacher in the classroom in public schools for 13 years and I'm a parent of getting, children who are getting older all the time. But I'd like to state a few things and then kind of pose this to the council as well. I agree strongly that quality is essential and I don't think that's a negotiable thing. And I've actually been confused and disappointed often with what I've heard from, you know, the Bantech report and other evaluations of the center. And that's really difficult for me because I value the quality so deeply. And I know many other people do too, who have been involved, from the staff to the parents to others in the community. I think in order to achieve that kind of quality, we do have to have a commitment and a commitment to nurture quality, not to browbeat quality. I don't think you can do that. I don't think teachers respond to fear to get better. It takes a certain amount of pride and morale as well. I'm concerned that our task force several years ago made some mistakes and I feel somewhat responsible for that as well, having served on that, that we were looking in a short-term vision in terms of scarcity, that economically, things were going down everywhere and Emeryville was no different. So we were tightening our belts, we were, you know, letting go of positions on the city staff. We were looking at every place where we could cut. That's when I joined the council. It was cuts, cuts, cuts all the time. And I'm pleased to see in our forecasting that we've heard from staff that things are looking better in terms of our revenues and that we're not in that position anymore. I think that increasing the number of students who could attend the center and thinking it would be an immediate thing, it took us a few years actually to get up to 110 with licensing and reducing staff and cutting some important positions that were supporting teachers in their professional development, I think those were mistakes that we made. And I think we've seen some of the difficulties that came from that as well. I think a long-term commitment to the center and trust in our staff, particularly the staff that are now in place, I think is essential. I'm not afraid of subsidizing childcare. We subsidize all kinds of other things and I think childcare is really important. And early childhood education, you know, a dollar spent on early childhood education saves, according to the research, multiples of that dollar later on in terms of cost to society for folks who did not have that quality education. So I'm not willing to have a half-baked program. I'm willing to increase the 1% that we contribute to early childhood education to, I don't know what the number would be, if it's a 4% number of our budget, something like that, just to see what that can do and what kind of a program we can have. I know there's excellent childcare out there. I've seen excellent childcare. I want to know what can take us to that place and I don't know how to achieve that. We've tried with some kind of Band-Aid fixes and I think that I would have to put my faith in people who could make those decisions and come up with a really valuable plan that can get us there. We subsidize a lot of things in our society and our youngest children often are not given the opportunities that I think they deserve. And I want to say something about having a unionized staff, which is very rare in childcare, almost unheard of. Unfortunately, those staff members in our city are some of the lowest-paid staff members that we have. However, what they're paid, I think compared to the private sector in childcare, is a little bit better. And so we're caught in this funny place where we see them as not being valued in the way that I think we value, because money is value, I think, within our own organization. But then in larger society, you get paid more to park people's cars all day than you do to watch their children and there's something wrong with that. So I'm happy if Emeryville can take a stand and actually make a difference in terms of how we deliver quality childcare. And I have concerns and I need to figure out how we get past those.
So if the management staff here is looking for affirmed commitment, you have a majority of the council who wants to see Emeryville have quality childcare. So that hasn't changed. I want to go back to some history that probably most of the people in the room don't know about, but for maybe about 25 years of the center's history, there was quality. It was a quality program and it was known as such. And when we went through some other budgetary belt tightening, there was a decision made to cut the infant care program because of the higher staffing ratios that that required with the babies. At that point, I then joined, after making that decision, I joined the infant care task force to work on trying to get corporate funding to support the resurrection of the infant care program. And that came back through a three-year deal with Chiron at the time. And so the commitment was restored to have zero to five be offered, you know, some months old to kindergarten through the city. So that commitment hasn't changed. What's changed are budget stressors, which are undeniable, and those have fluctuated over time. What's been unspoken tonight has been this Child Development Fund that's going to be depleted and what options there are to filling the gap. But we are about a full-service community. This is the first step in the lifespan, in the life cycle, to get people, to provide services for people. And I have a particular goal that there should be something available to anybody at some point, at any point in their lifespan in the city of Emeryville that can support them. And so we can do our part. Now, we haven't really talked, trustee Dwin is here. I know that they want to serve the same age group as what ECDC does. And I think we need to talk about if we can afford to have two entities run the same services targeted towards the same people. Because we're small and we can't do everything. But I'm a social worker and it's been 30 years of a work-life where it's clear to me, you can't totally meet human need, but what you can do, and when you do do it, you should do it well. So if we can be a small model, even though there are people who might not be able to get in at any particular cycle or any particular moment, we should do what we do well. And we're not right now. And there's some real, there's some real issues. So, but the commitment's still there.
Miguel, would you like to step up and say a little bit about what the school district has in mind?
Yes, I will. Miguel Dwin, trustee of the Emory Unified School District Board of Trustees. At this time, we have not visited what the school district would actually like to do with preschool, but over the years, we have had a very strong, robust relationship with Head Start. And at this time, Head Start is actually, they're serving students on our Ralph Hawley campus. And they are serving the children and families as vice mayor Asher has talked about, those who are somewhat, well, they're not actually caught in the middle. They're actually, you know, below the poverty level. So that's kind of where the district is at, you know? We want to serve all kids. We want to serve those who are below the poverty line as well as if we can serve those who are stuck in the middle. I think the discussion that you all are having here is a very good discussion and I really do think if the city really wants to have a full-service community, the two boards need to come together and really let's put our heads together and see what can we do for all children and families in Emeryville. So.
Thank you, Miguel. Do you have anything else, Nora?
Yeah, I do have a few comments to make. It's very clear to me that there is no one on this council that doesn't support early childhood education. We have several mothers and a father on the council and we all understand that those first five years are critical. Along with that, I want to make a couple of comments on the staff report. There is an issue here on budgeting. And whether you spend 1% or 4%, you have to look at the whole picture of the budget. But the issue for me tonight is not necessarily the budget, and that'll come as a shock to a lot of people. But what really hits me is the latest developments, the latest information we've gotten about the quality of the program. As Ruth said, for many, many years, the program was one, run in a way, it didn't have any, to my knowledge, really citations from the state or anything like that. And then somewhere along the line, this has deteriorated. I thank Mr. Carver for heading up the task force. I think the council was very responsive to listening to the task force recommendations and giving an honest effort to respond to the parents and the teachers who came forward with a model that they proposed. Clearly, this did not work. The program, from all the information that I have flowing into me, has deteriorated. And now I understand there's problems in the licensing area. The city manager said it best, I think. We want to run a program, but we want to run a quality program. This is not a quality program. I'm concerned, not necessarily with the drop-off in the enrollment, because as Jack said, these are outside forces that are at play here. But we have, for me, the whole thing rests on the quality of the program, that what are the children experiencing and how are we perceived, both from the parents and from the state? It appears that that situation has deteriorated. You know, we come back again and again, as Jack says, to the Child Development Center, sometimes around budget issues. This is, to my mind, a far more serious issue and that is the quality of the delivery of service to these children. And I don't think we can afford to kick the ball down the stream. We have to address this and we have to take some measures. Just saying, throw more money at it, to my mind, is not the solution. Something is wrong and we have to do the in-depth analysis to find out what is wrong. We've tried some things to fix the problems. They clearly don't seem to have worked, but we can't afford to delay anymore. So I would suggest that staff bring us back a guideline and an analysis and focus, for the moment, set aside the budget. Focus on the quality of the delivery of services. Does it reflect what the rest of the services in Emeryville give to the citizens here, like the police and the fire department? We don't see that quality. And we don't want to have these children at risk under any circumstances. So that's kind of the way I feel about it.
I agree with Nora in a lot of aspects and on this one I do too, but I also want to thank everybody for their hard work. But we have to take care of these babies out there. And one of my concerns is when I was on the school board, you talk about kids all the time. That's your role. And one of the disconnects I see is this council, we talk about kids when it's on the agenda, which is once or twice a year. And my concern is that it's a really, you know, our kids are the most important thing that we could, it's our job to make sure that they're taken care of. So I don't know if this body is the best body to oversee that type of support for the kids. So I'd be very interested in talking to the school district and seeing if there's some way that we can merge the models. And I've also told, and I've said this in the past, that to me, it doesn't make sense to have two different groups out there, Head Start and ECDC, taking care of babies in town. So I think it's, a baby is a baby, no matter what your income is here. If we have to do something with a sliding scale to make things work, but we need to get all the kids every opportunity we can to make them succeed. So my recommendation would be talking to the school district immediately and seeing what we can work with the school district and see what plans can be laid out. Yes?
I have one more thing to add here. And in some ways, I want us to think about this apart from the budget and what a good quality program is, but I also don't want to lose sight of what we did historically, which is that if you turn to page six of nine of the study session, that what staff recommended and what they asked for in 2009, 2010 was $450,000 to run a quality program and we gave them $300,000. The next year, they asked for $450,000 and we gave them zero. The next year, 300, they got 300. And you can see, right, that there's been a... And, and you can see, right, that there's been a, while I, I think that historically there was a more reliable subsidy coming from the city. And so while we can, you know, put the budget aside when we talk about how do we develop a quality program, I want to look at the way that the city has been historically underfunding what's been asked for, what's been, what's been requested and, and to take responsibility for that.
Well, I think-
I mean, this is done under budget pressures. I understand, right? That there, this was a time of cuts and with, but within that context, we were cutting the budget of the center.
Yeah, but my whole intent was to say, listen, what would it take to have the best program out there?
Right, right.
And then you look at the best program out there and you establish the value for the, the program.
Yes. And then work that way.
Yeah, you work that way.
I agree, mayor, yes.
So I'm not, I'm not saying, what I'm saying is we have a problem. We have to make sure all these babies are, are safe and protected. That's number one priority here. And then secondary is, we have to make sure the kids are educated. But we have to do it in such a fashion that it makes sense, a long-term sense. And so what I'm saying, I think we need to school, you know, sit down and have a conversation with the school.
I mean, I, that, that could be generative, that could be great, but I actually think what we'll find is that there's a lot of unmet need for daycare. That'll be the, that'll be the answer.
But if that's, but if that's the need, then it's an opportunity for us to fill the need.
It is, right?
And that seems to be part of the problem, is trying to get the kids-
It is.
-into the class.
And we're not getting them in.
Yeah.
Right.
There's this huge need that we're not getting them in.
Right, but that's because the cost has outstripped people's ability to pay. It doesn't mean that they don't need it. It means that they're falling down, you know, the economic ladder and can no longer afford it.
Mayor Brinkman, I have a question for the city manager. Do you need clearer direction or more direction or a decision?
Just enough.
Our philosophical, whatever's aside here. Yeah, no, I think what we'll, we'll do is we will go back and in the spring, we'll come back with some, we will initiate some conversations with the school district and with, you know, possibly some other providers and look at the best model that, that, you know, we think we want to bring forward with some, like I said, honest analysis on what would be the best for these kids and, and our community. So I think, I think we're fine and we'll bring something back in the spring and we can then possibly tie it into some of your budget conversations.
Okay.
Can I just say one more thing?
Jeffrey, we've already had it.
We've had it.
We've already had that.
Already had it.
This item?
We've had that, Brian.
Yep.
Okay.
I just want to share a concern that as much as I think Head Start is an important and quality program, it does not deliver a full day's care for families that need full care. So, and it's also targeted at only people who qualify and it's a very, very low income that qualifies for Head Start. So there may be elements there, but I want to be sure that council is clear on directing that we're trying to serve a spectrum of incomes and we're trying to provide a model that really can address working parents' needs in terms of a, a day, daycare.
No, I agree. I think that's the whole intent. Why do it halfway when we can do it the whole way?
And can we all agree that the top priority is a safe environment?
Absolutely.
Very disturbing to get these reports back about those kinds of problems.
So my question to the city manager is, do you think it's possible for the city of Emeryville to provide high-quality early childhood education?
Maybe we should do the research and have her come back then.
That's why I-
Well, like I said, you know, it, one is to have the commitment to do so, which, you know, it's, and regardless of what that model is, you all have the commitment to provide something. So that's one. The other is then to provide the commitment with the resources necessary. And that's not just dollars, but you know, also placing it as a high priority. So, you know, I, I think we'll come back and we'll look at what may, you know, makes sense and what some of those constraints are and provide those trade-offs for you. But yeah, I think we'll, it will be honest.
Great. I mean, we can't pussyfoot around with it because it's really important.
Yeah, I just want to, I want to just say something very unequivocal here for the city manager, because the past city managers heard this out of my mouth privately, but I'll, I'll just say it publicly, which is that inasmuch as the city is in a unique position to provide this little bit of public education, I think it needs to stay public. And I, and when we were thinking of trying to provide the service at lower cost, there was a threat a few years ago about maybe outsourcing. And this council member's not interested in seeing that outsourced. I, I believe in public education and doing what it takes to have a good public education.
Mayor Brinkman, I'd have to chime in as a council person too. I'm interested in looking at the whole range of options that are available to the council. I don't want to exclude any idea.
Okay. Anything else on this item? I want to thank everybody for coming and putting your hearts into this item and all the efforts and, and time. Thank you very much.